Six, twenty twenty one. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Commissioner Blanco, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. Right hand over your heart and stand if you would like, or if you can. And there's the flag, so ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
Chair Lopez?
Here. We have some additional information for the Zoom Planning Commission meeting. This is a regular Planning Commission public hearing. Comments should have been submitted to the city staff via email by 3:00 PM this afternoon. Comments, sorry. If you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raise hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you are recognized, you will be unmuted and allowed to comment at the business at hand in the order received. Maximum comment time is three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. If you are calling and you wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by dialing star nine and identify yourself when unmuted. We'll move on to the approval of Planning Commission minutes of December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Has every commissioner had a chance to read those? And if so, may we have a motion?
I move. I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Dickerson, seconded by Commissioner Seifert. May we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye. The public comment period is next. The public comment period, each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to a discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. These are for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment? Give it just a few more seconds. I don't see anybody, either panelists or attendees, raising their hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the first item. Before we go to the first item, some procedural items to note for the agenda. I will introduce the agenda item and turn it over to staff for the presentation. Once staff's presentation is completed, I will open the agenda item to the commissioners to ask any questions of staff. After all the questions by the commissioner are answered, I will open the agenda item to the applicant who will be on as an attendee. I will then ask any commissioner, if any commissioners have any questions of the applicant. Once the commission has asked questions of the applicant, I will open up item to those in favor, against, or neutral toward the agenda item. For the public, please wait to raise your hand until after I have called for public comment on the item, and the host will unmute you in the order received. Please remember, if you're dialing in, use the star nine keys to raise your hand. You will have up to three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. When the public comment is complete, only the applicant will be able to raise any rebuttal. After the rebuttal, no further questions from the commission. I will close the public hearing and turn the agenda item back to the commission for comments, questions, discussions, or motions. So we'll move on to item number one. And does any, did any commissioners have any expert communication on this item?
No.
I see none. We'll go on to the first item. It's a continued item, Gonzalez Multi-Family Residential Project at four oh one West Street. May we please have a staff report?
Okay. Thank you, Chair Lopez. My name is Cody Graybell. I'm an associate planner with the City of Santa Maria, and tonight I'm going to be presenting the Gonzalez multi-family development at four oh three West Street. This item includes four units, and the site has an existing single-family residence, so we'd have a total of five units on the property. And the item was introduced to the Planning Commission at the November fifth study session and was continued from the December second Planning Commission hearing. Tonight's presentation is going to include a revised design which addresses the setbacks as well as some more information about drainage that the Planning Commission had requested. So the site's located in the middle of the city. It's between Carmen Lane and West Street to the north and south, and Thornburg Street and Broadway to the east and west. The site's point four four acres in size, and it currently contains a single-family residence, as mentioned before. All of the existing accessory structures have since been demoed and removed from the project site, and there currently is no public right-of-way, and the condition of approval for this project will be the dedication of a right-of-way. So the site is zoned planned development, medium-density residential, and it's surrounded by residential, industrial, commercial, and public facility zoning. So this photo is taken from the corner of Thornburg and West Street. It just further illustrates how there's no public right-of-way, and the concept and design of the street frontage and of the intersection has been reviewed and approved by the engineering department prior to this meeting tonight. So the original site plan, it requested multiple setback reductions from the R two standards, and as requested by the Planning Commission, in the next slide, we're going to see the revised site plan, which no longer is going to be requesting these setback reductions. So the first setback reduction was the interior side yard. So typically, the R two zone requires a five-foot setback, and the applicant had originally requested a four-foot setback in order to provide some access for the fire lane. And then there also was another request for a two-and-a-half-foot setback reduction on the second stories of unit A and B. So typically, we'd see five feet here. Original design requested a two-and-a-half-foot reduction. And then typically, we'd see fifteen feet at the corner, and the original design requested another two-and-a-half-foot reduction to twelve-and-a-half feet. And then we have the standard setback of twenty feet in the front and ten feet in the rear. So now this revised design, as mentioned, is going to fully comply with the R two standards as requested by the commission. We now have a five-foot interior side yard setback, fifteen-foot corner yard setback, and then the twenty-foot setback in the front and the ten-foot setback in the rear. The design is very similar. There's only some minor changes. The units have got a little bit smaller in order to accommodate the setbacks. So unit A and B, there's still single-family residences that are two stories. They're approximately twenty-four feet high, so they comply with a thirty-foot maximum height restriction, and they both still provide two covered parking spaces as required by the code. There's still going to be three bedrooms and two-and-a-half bathrooms. And then unit C and D up front is the duplex, and each of those units are also going to be two stories, three bedrooms, and two-and-a-half bathrooms. In this case, they provide one covered parking space in the garage and then one uncovered parking space in the driveway as required by our code. And then unit E is just an existing single-family residence that will remain. So the original floor plans for unit A and B, they are going to be changing a little bit. The closet space, which is being shown in the red bubble here, is just going to move into the bedroom space to take away the two-and-a-half-foot setback reduction request. In terms of the layout, the units are still the same from the original design, which we're going to see here on the revised floor plan. So the first floor, it still has the kitchen, living room, and dining room and half bath. And then the second floor contains the three bedrooms and the two full bathrooms as well as the covered deck. The main difference here now is just the closet space is moved within the bedroom. So the elevations are also going to be changing a little bit as a part of this requested redesign. So the primary difference is this rear elevation for units A and B is no longer, excuse me, going to have the projection for the closet space, and the false corbels are going to be going away as well. So this will just become a flat elevation with a window. And the revised design, it still uses the same building materials with stucco and the same roofing material with shingle, and the same architectural features are being carried over with the window sills and the molding around the entry points. And yeah, the duplex, it's also going to have a change to the front elevation. The redesign no longer is going to, you'll notice, it'll no longer incorporate the second-story projection forward. Basically, the front elevation is now going to be a flat surface, and the architect has put in some roof material to help break the elevation. So this is what I was referencing in the front here. And we still have the same building materials that are consistent and the same features for unit C and D as shown on unit A and B. So there's also some renderings that I'm going to walk through briefly. They just help further show the revisions to the design. So this is looking from the corner of West and Thornburg to the northeast. And unit A here no longer is proposing to have the closet projection. This is looking from West Street, from the driveway onto the site, and it's showing this new roof material being proposed along the front of the duplex. This here is just unit B, and it just helps provide a little bit more depth and texture in regards to the features that are incorporated onto the building. And then lastly, this is just showing the project from the neighbor's site down West Street. So this is looking back to the northwest, and it's also showing again that the closet projection is no longer being proposed. And then one more item the Planning Commission requested information about was the drainage. So I just wanted to briefly discuss the city's requirement for a stormwater control plan. This was submitted with the PV, and it requires a demonstration that the design can accommodate a twenty-five-year storm event, which is a Public Works standard, and also that the runoff volumes equal the pre-development volumes. So both of these standards were reviewed and approved by Public Works Department, and if the project is approved, a grading permit will be required, and these above standards will again be incorporated into the grading permit and ultimately have to be approved by Public Works prior to issuance of building permits. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission by motion approve PV twenty nineteen dash zero zero one three and U twenty twenty dash zero 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 one. This concludes my presentation, and myself, staff, and the applicant are now available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do. I can't hold my, I don't know where my hand is. There it is.
Commissioner Smith, go ahead.
Okay. Having a hard time. I just wondered, Cody, thank you. That was a good presentation. I liked the changes. It's a good-looking project, and it suits all the zoning and the setback requirements. The stormwater, was there changes to that? Was it substantial changes, or did that already meet the requirements? Was there, I didn't notice a big change. Is there a change?
Commissioner Seifert, there wasn't any changes. It was just an opportunity to provide more info. So, yeah, the design is remaining the same.
Okay, and everybody's happy with that?
Yeah, Public Works, when I spoke with them, they reviewed for the requirements listed, and they determined it does comply.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Any other questions for staff from the commission? If not, may we hear from the applicant? Is the applicant on? Cody, is it? Oh, yeah, Mr. Smith is on. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Chair Lopez and commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to share again our project and our revisions that I think were well-received and well-implemented. I think they added to the project. So the, there are two points I'd like to just clarify regarding the duplex. I'm not sure that Cody mentioned that we did narrow the building one foot, and that's how we achieved that setback compliance. And the front elevation is not exactly flat. We did step back the upper floor to help with that tip roof. So we lost a little bit of floor area, but I think it still looks well. And I think Cody did hit on the other points very well. And if there's anything I can add to it, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant? I see none. Mr. Smith, is a Brian Stanley part of your team?
He is, I believe, a neighbor down the road, down West Street.
Okay. And we'll get to the public as soon as we're done with this portion of the presentation or of the item, agenda item. So no questions for the applicant? If there are none, I'll go ahead and open this up to the public for those in favor, against, or mutual on this project. Mr. Stanley, please go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Okay. First off, I would like to address the commission as a whole. I don't think you guys at all are listening to the concerns of the community of this, this project as being built in. Last meeting, we had a number of individuals from the neighborhood voice concerns, and I don't feel like you guys even cared that we had anything to say. Second, there is a retaining wall that is on the property line that's a good six feet tall, that's over forty years old, that's going to have three structures built up against it within five feet. And I don't think that retaining wall meets any kind of code to support that kind of weight. And that's a big concern for me because it's going to affect the property owner next to them if we have a major earthquake that decides to tear down that wall and bring down property with it. Because that wall was built over forty years ago to a different code specification than there is today. Again, there's a problem, there's going to be a problem with parking, I guarantee it. You guys already kind of addressed the concern of what if some of these units convert their garages into living quarters through permitting? Then that pushes overflow into the neighborhood, and this neighborhood already has a problem with parking. And again, I just don't feel like you guys are listening to the concerns of the people in this neighborhood. You guys have probably never been in this neighborhood. You don't know anything about this neighborhood, and it's quite offensive that you guys are going forward without even listening to the concerns of people in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Any questions of the applicant? I'm sorry, I see one more hand going up. Kathy, Ms. Kathy will have three minutes.
Yes, my name's Kathleen Stanley. I've lived on in this neighborhood since nineteen sixty. I've watched development come up around it. As far as a retaining wall goes, I know when it was put in, there was no earthquake specifications really back then as far as standards in building on top of that retaining wall. And I'm very concerned that not only can the people who live in the units die, but anybody on the outskirts of that can get severely injured. And again, with the parking, if you're permitting those garages to be turned into units, where are these people going to park? They're going to end up down in my neighborhood, and that's not fair to any of us down here. And that concludes my, what I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Stanley. Okay. Does the commission have anything that they'd like to address with respect to any of the comments or have any questions for the staff or the architect? I'll just, go ahead, Commissioner Seifert.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to rebut the last two comments, but I would suggest that I'm sure that we can get someone from the city to check out the retaining wall, and if there was a problem with it or if it didn't meet the standards, that could be addressed when they do the rest of the work. Cody, is that something that is in your field there?
Yes, Commissioner Seifert. So Mr. Stanley actually contacted me expressing this concern, and I followed up with Tom Jack, our senior plans examiner in the city. And he explained to me that the design professional is going to be required during construction to provide underpinning and protection of the foundation. Prior to construction, they're going to have to have a sequencing plan set up to ensure that this retaining wall is supported. And then the plans themselves, you know, of course, are going to have to meet the California Building Code. A soils report is going to have to be provided. So, yeah, we'll be, you know, extra cautious and ensure that there's going to be no impacts to the neighbors as a result of this proposal.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody. Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Commissioner Blanco, is he there? He might be muted.
He's frozen.
Okay, well, I just, we'll come back to Commissioner Blanco when he gets back on. Cody, could you comment on the reduction of parking spaces if something is converted? Maybe, maybe, I mean, it's not just this specific project, but it's citywide and that's available to property owners, correct?
Yes, Chair Lopez, that's correct. There's laws from the state of California now for accessory dwelling units that the city has to comply with, and they apply to all residential zones.
And that's, if you do convert a required parking area, you do not have to replace it. That's what the current state law says, correct?
Yes, Chair Lopez, that's correct.
So it's citywide, I just want Mr. Stanley to know that that can happen anywhere in the city, any residential areas. Thank you, Cody. Commissioner Blanco back on? Commissioner Blanco? I see he's on.
Yeah, I apologize. I lost my connection just as Commissioner Seifert was finishing his comment. But my comment or question was going to be, I think, the same, so I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that we're going to be addressing that concern with the retaining wall, not only for the neighbors but also for the property itself. Obviously, we want to protect both properties, and it's good to know, was not aware that that wall was that old. That's really good to know, but certainly good to hear that, that the building department is looking at that and has already made provisions to address that concern. So in terms of the parking, I think we've talked about the parking before. I don't know that there's any, if there are any questions or anything that we can do to address that. Maybe that is a question. Is there anything that we can do, or is that sort of out of our hands at this point, given, given what the applicant is proposing and any requirements that would already be required? Parking is an issue citywide, every city, so I don't know that there are any, anything that we can do, but is there anything that this project would be doing that would, that would differ from any other proposal that would impact parking? I don't see it. I think we're providing, I think it's providing the appropriate parking on site. I just don't know what else, if anything, could be done.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. We are still in the public comment portion. I have not closed that yet. I don't see any other hands. I do see a hand from Mr. Stanley. Mr. Stanley, we typically only do a one-time allow of public comment from an individual, a single, a single comment. So we are not seeing any other attendees raising their hands to comment. I will go ahead and close the public comment portion and bring this back to the commission for any discussion, comments, or any other questions amongst the commissioners or a
Chair Lopez, we may also want to see if the applicant has any additional comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Yeah, the applicant is allowed to leave. Mr. Smith, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I appreciate the invitation, but I think Cody did cover those bases, and our engineering team is aware of the concern, and we are not going to be influencing that retaining wall per our design.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I saw on your plans that structural engineers involved, so they'll be looking at that retaining wall and the impact of, if any, of the new structure. All right, thank you. So I'll go ahead and close the public comment period, bring it back to the commission for any other further discussion, motion, or comments. I'll start. I really think this is going to be a great addition to this area. I have been to this neighborhood quite a bit, actually. Not recently, but I think that this, this project will really have a good presence there on the corner as an entrance to the, what is it, Thornburg side. I like it. I thank the architect for going ahead and making those changes so that we don't have that encroachment in the setbacks. I like the style of architecture. I think that everything that we requested was answered from the last Planning Commission meeting, so I like the project. Anyone else? Going to make a comment or? Commissioner Seifert?
Okay. Yeah, I'm with you, Chair. I think that the changes to this is going to make this a very successful project. It's long overdue, that street gets redone. I've driven by it for years, driven by the whole area for years. It'd be nice, it's going to be nice to start seeing some development in there and getting the streets where they need to be. I think the applicant has done what he needed.
Private neighborhood!
Think the applicant has done what he needed to do to get within his setbacks. He's well within his rights to do this, just as Mr. Stanley and Ms. Stanley are welcome to come before us and improve their property. So they're all zoned, in the same zoning. They all have the same opportunities there. So I'm sorry that they're so upset about this. It does meet the requirements of the city, and they've come along and they've got their setbacks, they've got their.
I want to be there, hear and talk, because you unmute me, and I'll just unmute myself.
That's, that's great. We're, it's not going to help.
Well, and it's not, I'm going to keep.
Mr. Stanley, you're out of order. Please.
Yeah, I know I'm out of order, but you guys. So I'll just. I'll just, I'm making help for you.
Sorry, I apologize, Chair. Okay, I think we can continue.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Seifert? I don't know if you were done or not.
I don't know. I just, you know, there's so much advice in this, in this world. People are so on the edge about everything. It's just a, just a very rough time to be living through these days, especially with the current situation that's happening today. It's unfortunate that Mr. Stanley feels that he needs to do this and to break into this meeting, and I'm sorry that he feels that he's not being heard, because he's definitely being heard. We've addressed everything that we have the power to address from his concerns and Stanley's concerns. We had another applicant, we had another public comment that was concerned about the drainage, and we definitely brought that on the agenda, and we addressed that also. We are doing everything in our power to make sure that this is done towards the correct zoning and it's done correctly towards the city policies. zoning and it's done correctly towards the city policies. That's the only power that we have. We don't make policy, but we can certainly see that this is meeting all of the current standards that the city sets for a building project of this magnitude. So, you know, it's unfortunate that the neighbor is so upset about this, but the applicant is definitely within his rights to develop this project and he had an opportunity in the last meeting and he addressed those items. We had an opportunity tonight, we've addressed those items. So I do believe that we're listening. I do believe that we have listened to the applicant. I believe we've listened to the neighbors. And I think that, I think that we're doing what we can with the power that we have. And I think this is a good-looking project. I think it's going to help that street. I actually think it's going to help the neighborhood. But obviously, that's, that's not a, that's my opinion. I'd like to thank the applicant for making those changes and that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yeah, I just want to concur with what Commissioner Seifert said. I agree with everything that he said. I am sorry that Mr. Stanley and Ms. Stanley are upset by this. I do feel like from the previous session that we had and this one, that the applicant has addressed the issues that we brought forth. From the retaining wall, we've been covering that now through staff and through drainage as well as the setbacks. As Commissioner Seifert said, the applicant does have a right, he's a property owner, to develop that property and I think that the commission has done what it can to address the various concerns that have been brought up. The only concern that we, that we have not been able to address, quite frankly, is parking issues, but they have got the parking that is necessary for the, for the project itself at this time. And if, if for some reason, and of course, the applicant has said that they don't have a desire to create additional dwelling units, but if for some reason they did down the road, I'm no big fan of those. I mean, anybody else can tell you on this commission, but the reality is that is a state-imposed standard and we, it is completely out of our control as to whether or not they decided to move down that road and the issues regarding parking. That's where, all we can do is hope that the applicant is as good as their word and that is not their intent, but that quite frankly, if they decide to do something else, then that is also their right. Once again, I concur with Commissioner Seifert. This is a good project and Chair Lopez. I think that they have addressed the various issues and I appreciate that. And I haven't heard any additional issues that we have not addressed. And as someone who has regularly gone through that neighborhood, gone on that street for a number of years, I am aware of the dynamics of that neighborhood and the dynamics of those streets. So I'm glad to see that, as Commissioner Seifert said, that maybe we start the process of some of the properties being rehabbed and remodeled. So I'm in favor of this project as it's been laid out to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickerson. Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I was, you know, rather than repeating what everybody said, I am in agreement with what Commissioner Seifert and Commissioner Dickerson mentioned about the project. I think, you know, we've looked at it a couple of times. We've certainly reviewed it closely and we've gotten good feedback from residents and I think we've addressed it to the best of our ability and the applicant has done a good job of also addressing our comments. The, I guess the one item out there that I had a question on was the parking, but as I understand it, the project is providing the required parking on-site and so there's, there's no apparent issue there. Offsite parking is something that's out of our control and we can't do a whole lot about, but if they're doing their, their part on-site, then that's all we can really ask. So anyhow, I think the project does look good and I think it does help that, that area to hopefully move in the direction to redevelop and make it a better, better community for everybody. So that's about it. I do support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanco. Anyone else looking to make a comment, motion, or any other discussion?
I agree with the other commissioners. The applicant did make the changes that the commission asked. I know that it's difficult for property owners to see change, but this is an improvement. They are improving the property and for that reason, I'm in support of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. We'll entertain a motion.
I can make the motion. I move, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve the Gonzalez multifamily development, planned development permit and conditional use permit at photo 403 West Street.
Give me a second.
I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Seifert. Please have a roll call.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Chair Lopez?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And I do want to add that any planning commission decision is, can be appealed to the city council. There, I believe the instructions are on the website, so that's for Mr. Stanley and Mrs. Stanley. So we do not have the final say. These can be appealed to the city council. Congratulations to Mr. Smith for hearing your quiet. Good luck. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to other business. Do we have any oral reports from the planning commission or staff?
Chair?
Yes.
I just had a, it's more of a question and possibly an agendized item down the road, but I know that Commissioner Blanco and I have both brought up the issue regarding 166 and 135. My last communication with Sean was that someone in Public Works was going to be starting to look into that and that was late November. And so I know that there were, I had requested perhaps a time study, a time travel study of some kind. I would kind of either like an update or a meeting or something that just kind of keeps the ball rolling and that we actually have some movement going on. So that's more or less a request, maybe, that we have a, an agenda item down the road here.
Okay. All right. Dana's on and she has her hand up. Dana?
Yeah, thank you. That was actually one of the items that I was going to be updating your commission on tonight. Yeah, so we are doing some, we've been continuing to look into that particular topic. Right now, Public Works and Planning are working on, doing some coordination with Caltrans. And also, we're looking into some of the studies that were completed as part of the downtown streetscape update and the downtown specific plan. There were some traffic studies, I believe, that were completed and so Mr. Ying is working on that. And I think our plan is probably to bring this to you at a study session and we're looking, I think, sometime in March to do that. So we have been working on that and it's a priority. And then...
Thank you, Dana.
Okay, you're welcome.
Dana, or Chair Lopez, I had, at our, one of our meetings, I had suggested that maybe we can make it a joint meeting with city council and put a little bit more behind it and let Caltrans know that, you know, that it's not just planning commission interested, but also council with them. And I assume that they would be interested, so I don't know, Dana, if that's been thrown out, if it's, if it's been proposed as a joint meeting with council and maybe bringing in upper-level staff from Caltrans to talk and present. So just wanted to mention that and see if there'd been any contact with council regarding that.
At this point, we're sort of in the earlier stages of looking at some past studies and talking to Caltrans at our staff level, and so we haven't yet reached out to the council. I can circle back with Mr. Ying on that, but I think our plan at this point is to bring it in March as a study session and then look at, for the next steps, maybe we could do that. But at this point, I think the best course of action, because some work has already been done previously, is for us to look at that, get into our contact at Caltrans, and then start off with that information.
Okay, all right. And I know we do have a, well, do we have, we have a downtown revitalization committee meeting next week, but I don't know if that might be appropriate to bring up at that point. I really don't know what the agenda is. See if there's any interest in the develop, well, I guess there isn't a developer yet, but maybe it is a good time to bring that up. Never mind. Any other, any other reports from commissioners, staff?
I don't know if this is appropriate, Chair. Are you on that committee, downtown revitalization?
Yes, I am.
One thing that I'm a little concerned with is, I don't know that this is the right form, but, you know, we have a lot of very small businesses on the shoestring down there and when we do revitalize, we do need to keep an eye open out for where they're going to open up their businesses and how we're going to keep those small businesses that are here now struggling. If we build these multi-million dollar buildings, high rises, they're not going to be able to afford the rent. So I guess when we do the revitalization, I think it's imperative that we think about our businesses that are here now and we really have to allow a space for them, because I don't think that with the costs of the way that things are nowadays, I don't think they'll be able to afford the leases or the rents from the buildings. That's just something I was thinking about the other day, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, I think, I think once they have a developer selected, which I think is still some time, maybe Dana, Dana's raised her hand, maybe she, Dana's at some even. Do you have a timeline on when the committee is looking at actually, or the city, and we'll go to city council before they select somebody, correct?
So my hand was raised just to provide, I just wanted to let you know I have a few more updates to provide. I don't have anything to add on Commissioner Seifert's comment, though.
Okay. Well, I'll find out and we'll give, when we have our next meeting, maybe we'll toss that out there and if it's appropriate, maybe they'll chime in on, maybe that's, I know that was one of the directions that was given to...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Hi, this is Heather Wickham, Assistant City Attorney. I'm very sorry to interrupt you. I just want to caution you that this is not on our agenda tonight, a discussion about downtown revitalization and, and the projects there. So we really can't be giving you any direction to take back to the committee. Obviously, you've, you know, I think you have an idea as to what some concerns might be and those, I'm sure, are things you guys will be talking about, but we really can't give any direction this evening or really have much, any more deliberations on that just because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Heather. Got it? Okay, Dana, sorry, go ahead with the other reports.
Okay, thank you. I just, since we're now in the new year, I just wanted to go through some of our upcoming hearing dates. So our study session tomorrow has been canceled. And then we also do not have any items scheduled for January 20th for that hearing and so I would recommend we go ahead and cancel that hearing as well. We just, I don't, I checked with staff and we're not going to have any items for that day. And also, we do not have anything for the study session on the 21st either. On February 5th, we're going to be meeting to complete the election of the planning commission officers for this year, so we'll have that item on February 5th. And then, as we were just discussing, I did just want to let you know that there is that downtown committee meeting that's scheduled for next week on the 13th at 1:30 PM. And there's essentially been two finalists for that downtown request for proposals that have been selected and there's going to be a presentation given from those two development And that's all I have tonight for the update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Dana, can I ask you, Dana, is that going to be, is that going to be an online Zoom sort of thing or in chambers or where?
Yes, it's going to be a webinar, the same format that we use for our planning commission meetings. And I can send you a link to that webinar if you'd like. We can send that out.
If you could, I'd like an invite for that.
Sure.
I'd like to get an invite too, Dana, if you don't mind.
Okay, yeah, we'll send that to all of you.
And I'm sorry, what was the date, date and time again?
It's January 13th at 1:30 PM.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
All right. Any other comments from staff or, I'm sorry, reports from staff or planning commissioners?
Chairman Lopez, I have a little bit of a concern, that meeting that we've been talking about on the 13th. We can't have a majority of the planning commission there participating unless we notice it as a, as a meeting. So perhaps when Dana sends the information, she can ascertain whether that's going to be an issue or not.
They'll be on as attendees as opposed to panelists, correct? Does that make a difference?
Well, if you participate in the meeting, it could create a Brown Act violation because there's a majority of you there participating.
But if we're not participating, if we're just listening, Heather?
Yeah, if you don't participate in any way, then I believe there's an exception for publicly noticed meetings of other bodies, but you wouldn't be able to participate in any way if that was the way you went.
I think it might be safer to, I know they do them for the town hall meetings that we have. You guys let a notice out for there may be more than three, a quorum or something to that effect. Is that something we can do, well, even though they're not going to be participating?
I'm sorry, Chairman Lopez, what was your question?
My question is for the town hall meetings that we have, for example, the H2A meetings that we were having a couple of years ago with all the commissioners there, I guess we weren't really participating, it was more for information. If the commissioners are on as attendees and not participating in this meeting, maybe we can still send out a notice that, whatever that notice you folks send out to, to, I guess, announce that there could be a quorum present even though they won't be participating?
Well, there is an exception under the Brown Act for the attendance of majority of a body if it's at another open and notice meeting of another body that you can attend. But again, you can't discuss amongst yourselves or participate in the meeting. So if you wanted to participate, we'd have to notice it as a meeting of the planning commission. If you are just attending as participant, attendees and not participating, then I think you'd be fine under that Brown Act exception.
Okay.
And I guess that's the other question is, I mean, is there any, is there any downside to noticing it and then that way gives all of us the option to be there and to ask questions if we, if we come across a question we want to ask? I mean, is there any downside to going ahead and noticing it?
Well, I don't know that it was the intent of the city to have, in essence, like a joint meeting or to have your body participating in that meeting. I don't know.
Yeah, in the past, Dana, I think you guys typically just run it. The attendees or the panelists are the only ones that take part of the meeting and I don't, I don't even recall if we really had that many attendants, attendees.
Yeah, Chair Lopez, that's correct. We don't typically have a lot of attendees come to these meetings, but they are, this one is going to be run as a public webinar, so we will have a number of panelists and then there will be, it'll be open for attendees to come in as well.
Okay. So then, you can go that route, but don't say anything. I guess, right, Heather? Just want to, want to make sure nobody gets in trouble. All right, so we'll go on as, everybody can go on as attendees, I guess, in this noticed meeting. So any other questions or comments? If not, I think we're adjourned. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're adjourned at 7:22. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, good evening, guys.
Good evening. Good evening.